February the 18th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. I ask that you please silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices. I ask that you please stand for the prayer and pledge. The prayer will be by Anthony Snow, member of Healer Nation Church, and Councilman in College will say the pledge.
Dear kind and most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us thus far in our life and the blessings you continue to bless on us in the future. Continue to put a hedge of protection around us all as we go forth in the future. At this time, for all of us in this room, please give us all wisdom and give us all wisdom in the decisions we make in a responsible manner for the movement and betterment of the city. In Christ Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
Our pledge is: Good to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman in College, and thank you, Mr. Snow. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes? Ms. Yancey?
Just want to call for attention with the revised business agenda item number three.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Do we have a motion to approve the order, agenda order of approval with the revised business agenda item number three? Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Yancey.
The Gochee Martin Bluff Hotel Gate Party will be this Saturday, February 22nd, from 4:00 PM until I perform a singing of the mall property. The Gochee Martin Bluff Parade hosted by the Gochee Men's Club will be on February 22nd at 7:00 PM. Gochee Community Market will be Saturday, February 22nd from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM at Library Lane in Gochee, Mississippi. The market will be collecting granola bars for the March of the Mayor event. And Tasty Thirsty will be February 27th at beginning at 11:00 AM at the former singing of the mall property.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and we do not have one, so we'll move right on to our business agenda. Business agenda item number one, approval of a resolution requesting amendment of House Bill 1724, 2019 legislative session to include parcels numbered 87116101.000, 87116105.000, 82435270.040, and 82426590.020. Is that you, Ms. Yancey?
Yes, I was making it.
Okay.
If you recall, seven years ago, since 2019, we had a local private pass that allowed the city, if it owned the property, to get special tax exemptions for not only 53 acres of single mall property, but also it reached government, including the 32 acres that's known as Town Mountain Park. So subsequent to that, actually off the property, the parcels were collapsed and changed numbers. The local private legislation is specific to parcel numbers that now don't exist. So what this request of amendment does is basically straighten out parcel numbers in the local private, so it's consistent with what those parcel numbers now are in the tax assessment office. We've already talked to the legislature about it, and as you know, the local private has to have the minimum support going up to the legislature.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution requesting amendment of House Bill 1724? Motion by Councilman in College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Alvin. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin.
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes. Does that include the property on the Highway 90, the old State Farm building that we bought?
Yes.
It does include that?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that all you have? Councilman in College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Alvin. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, consideration for an abatement at 7305 Martin Bluff Road, Gochee, Mississippi, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If y'all get to the last meeting, we had to re-advertise it through the push of this agenda. This is a recommendation for council to approve code enforcement to have the property cut and remove the road's trash and debris and secure abandoned divided property. This is 7305 Martin Bluff Road. So if council approves this, then we will continue work after the next 10-day period, and then if approved, council may charge the cost of lien against the property, decollect the Ponse, collect through civil proceedings, add $15, $10, and 50% to either the collection methods. I included the pictures of the property and parcel information, the code case filed through review. I will say that over the long weekend, the owners, if somebody had gone in and done some work, I'm not sure to what extent at this point, so we're recommending approval to continue. We still feel that there are five issues to this property that need to be addressed.
Okay. Any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion to approve the abatement? And if so, make sure you state the lien and how you want to collect it and the amount of the collection method.
Making a motion to approve the abatement of 7305 Martin Bluff Road. Now, penalty is assessed on the property, and the amount of 1,550% of actual cost, including cost recovered is more to be assessed to a lien on the property.
Got a motion by Councilman in College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin.
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson.
No discussion.
Councilman in College?
Yeah, I know it's with most abatements, our code enforcement department, if they're making an effort to clean the property, they'll work with the code department and make sure that, allow the owner the opportunity to make that property clear. But this is just to make sure that if the owner doesn't follow through with it, then we can go ahead and clear the property.
Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Adam answered my question, so I have no other comment.
Thank you. Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to thank our planning department and legal, Mr. Denos, and all that are involved in cleaning up Gochee and related properties, help recruit development to our city, help make safer neighborhoods. So we're thankful for all your hard work. And as you've heard already, that if they're working to clean it up, we won't have to use taxpayer dollars. But since we already spent taxpayer dollars to advertise, we need to continue to move forward. We have a motion by Councilman in College, a second by Councilman Anderson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our business agenda, item number three, consideration for an abatement at 1917 Broadmore, Gochee, Mississippi, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a consideration of abatement 1917 Broadmore. This is the abatement, and we're recommending council to allow us to actually demolish this unsafe and dilapidated structure. There have, much like the last case, there have been some last-minute ditch efforts made of the property. We don't really know the extent of any kind of repairs that have been made, or whether it's the full. So it's our opinion that they're still in unsafe condition for the property. Therefore, we're asking council to move forward to allow us to have this property demolished. And approved, and if you're charged as a lien against the property, collect it through civil proceedings, and also add 1,550% to the above methods. And you have the photos, the package, and the parcel information in case.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Any public comments on business agenda item number three? If you do, come to the podium, state your first and last name, and you have three minutes.
I just received this letter. I got it the 5th of January.
State your first and last name and your address.
Michael Howard Carr. I guess 821 Sarin Street, past two. I got this letter dated January 30th, and I got it out of the post office in Gochee on the 5th of February. And me and my grandson have been up there working, cleaning the front and two sides. I haven't replaced the two windows. The neighborhood kids have busted out. They tore up the back door, brand new doors, but, and cut down the limbs, and picked up all kinds of limbs. I got the back of the trailer to clean, two windows to put on, and some boards on the porch here, plates. I'm doing the best I can. I stay there with my wife, too. She's on the breathing machine, she's going through everything. And I have to get her up, walk to the car, clean, and put her back. And I myself have a failed fusion on the lower back, two fractured, one below it. I'm kind of messed up, too. Doing the best I can.
Is that all you have, Mr.?
I've been up there working. I did get the letter.
After our meeting, if you could speak with Mr. Ankerson or Mr. Patrick back in the back, he's the code enforcement, give them your contact information and communicate with them, please. And give them a better way to communicate, maybe than waiting on Snell now to get to you. Okay? Thank you.
Just wait right here, I guess.
Any other comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion to approve an abatement at 1917 Broadmore, Gochee, Mississippi? And if so, how, make sure you state how you're going to assess the lien, collect the lien, and fines.
I'm making a motion to approve the abatement to 1917 Broadmore Drive. Not assess a penalty and the cost to be set as a lien on the property.
We got a motion by Councilman in College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Alvin. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin.
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Are we allowing him a time frame?
Well, they were. It wasn't mentioned in the motion, but as long as he's working with the planning department, we won't go in there and do something. But due to, it's already advertising and everything, and so we don't have to waste taxpayer dollars.
I just want to make sure it didn't need to be in the motion. Thank you.
Councilman in College?
I do have a question for, you are the property owner?
Yes.
This property has been vacant since 1988, hasn't had an active water account to us since 1988. What is your intent?
Well, I have five grandkids, and we were just hoping on to the family. And I haven't been able to do anything. They have two knee replacements. I'm into a...
I understand that. Like I said, but since 1988 to 2025, that's a pretty good, significant period of time.
It is, I understand.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
So I'm seeing, you saying, you know, the comment was to demolish it. I mean, I can't see what the, I see the, all the stuff on it, but I'm saying, what in it, is the structure unsound or something like that?
Councilman, with the windows and doors being off the structure and all the material of this mobile home being open to the elements for so many years, that was how we faced our determination. Of course, if the owner's working on the property and we get to go out and inspect the mobile home and its entirety, so we can see that he's made repairs, and that it's no longer that we can deem unsafe and important to the amount of margin.
Gotcha. Okay.
Is that all you have? Councilman Jackson?
That's it.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman in College, a second by Councilman Alvin. All in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Carr, if you'll just speak to them after the meeting, and they'll guide you swap numbers, okay? That brings us to business agenda item number four, consider a request for a four-foot, five-inch variance to side yard setback requirements for an accessory building in an R1 low-density city, single-family residential zoning district located at 8216 Matrodale Drive, Gochee, Mississippi, GPC number 25-01-VAR, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Robert McDonald for five-foot, four-foot, five-inch variance to side yard setback requirements. The application fee is $175, paid on December 10, 2024, and all public notice required to admit. The background on this case, the applicant would like to place this as a building five foot seven inches from the side property line, due to the other elements required, accessory building ten foot from the side property line. I included in the packet the definition of the partnership for your review, and also the review criteria as listed in my orders. The planning commission recommends that city council approve this variance. It was meeting the criteria from the UAF for approval. City council may approve the variance as presented, approve the variance if changes to the non-aberrant. I included the excerpt from the meeting for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve the request for a four-foot, five-inch variance to a side yard setback requirement for an accessory building in R1 low-density city, single-family residential zoning district located at 8216 Matrodale Drive, Gochee, Mississippi, GPC 25-01-VAR, PID 85441920.000.
I'm making a motion that we approve planning commission's recommendation.
Motion by Councilman in College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion? Starting with Councilman Alvin.
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman in College?
Benefit of this is the city has a lift station on the property directly adjacent to it, so at least we're not invading any, you know, adjacent property owners. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
We have a motion by Councilman in College, a second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our business agenda item number five, consideration of a special exception that would allow a tiny home transitional living development in an AG agricultural zoning district located on Carter Road, Gochee, Mississippi, GPC 25-02-SE, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Randy Bosar for a special exception that would allow a tiny home transitional living development in an AG agricultural district. The application fee is $250, paid on December 19, 2024, and all public notice required to admit. The background of the property, general features, approximately 4.14 acres. There is possible water, wastewater services available in the area. The current surrounding zoning is AG agricultural. The lots to the south of the property shown on Exhibit B as R2 was rezoned to ag agricultural in January of 2024, as y'all may remember. The comprehensive plans feature land use designation for this property as low-density residential. I've included the criteria for a special exception as listed in your unified voting ordinance, along with the applicant's responses and staff's findings to those. The planning commission recommends that city council approve this special exception as presented. City council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception if changes or not as such. You know, I've included the minutes from the meeting, include that for your review, and I'll answer any questions if you might want to.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Any public comments on business agenda item number five? If you do, come to the podium, state your first and last name. You got three minutes.
My name is Ashley Hawthorne. I live at 6405 Mark Road, actually in Theodore, Alabama, but long-term native of the coast. I am the secretary of the board of directors for Transition Boulevard, so obviously I'm there to speak in support of this program and this special exception. I do want to kind of highlight the things that I did want to make sure you took away from our proposal. Number one, this program is a need within any community, and I think that Gochee would be truly fortunate to be a pioneer for that here on the coast. We included in the packet some statistics about why these kinds of programs reduce crime. They really increase the potential of the participants of these programs to go on and get stable housing, get stable jobs, go to college. And I do want to point out that this is a well-thought-out, legitimate program. This is a selective program where we are working with the, I can't think of the word. We're working with partners in the local area in order to get applicants to the program. They do have to fill out an application. They have to show a desire. We don't, we're not accepting those that have criminal records. We think that this program is really going to be good for this city in addition to the participants of the program. We do want to emphasize that the research shows that these participants really need their own space, so that's the reason for the independent living. But yet, our purpose is to kind of bridge them to independent living. So that's why the small spaces are a feature of this program and what's going to make it successful going forward. So we really hope that you will consider working with us. We've really put a lot of time and consulted with a lot of experts on the best way to move forward with this, so we appreciate you hearing our case tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments on business agenda item number five? Any other public comments?
My name is Lee Bond. I live in the area, have property in the area.
Address?
I'm sorry.
Your address.
Address, 5500 Richard Road. I am all in favor of helping people who have a trucking company, we hire people, I pay to put people through programs, also whether it's drug addiction, homelessness, you name it, all in favor of that. So I don't want to sound cold here, but sometimes I think we've got to think about big picture of why we have zoning and why we do certain things in certain areas. I do agree, they need their own space. I'm not just speaking up behalf of me. I know just about everybody in the area, and I've had dozens of people that have asked me if I would speak on behalf of them, so I'm representing them, so to speak, so that you're just not my own opinions, but others. I feel really bad because I think the mission is worthy, I do. But I think there's other places that this might be better. It's about location. This area is rural, it's agricultural, and there's aesthetics to think about. It's residential. It's not, it's a rural agricultural residential area. Examples, you wouldn't put a cement factory in Hickory Hills. You wouldn't put a shooting range on Ladney Road. You wouldn't put trailers in Shell Landing. You wouldn't put a jail at the old place. There are things that are needed to help a community, but you got to put them where the zoning was planned. A soup kitchen would be great, but not long traveling the road for many reasons. If not the population density there, it just doesn't make sense. That's what planned zoning is for. That's why the city set up zoning. It's zoned low-density, not high-density. The main issue is you do not have the municipal infrastructure there. You don't have transportation. You don't have the food there. It's agricultural. You don't have, it's even tough for the police to cover that area. It's rural. So basically, it does not meet the requirements. It will also reduce the value of the surrounding properties, unfortunately. Again, I feel bad about saying that, but it's the truth. So I respectfully ask that you vote against both the misuse of the zoning for the tiny homes, and I'll come back and speak also, just here about the 300 square foot dwelling, but I'd ask that you vote against both of those.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Any other public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion from council?
I make a motion to deny the special exception that would allow a tiny home transitional living development in an AG agricultural zoning district located at Carter Road, Gochee, Mississippi, GPC 25-02-SE.
We have a motion by Councilman George. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman in College. Any discussion? Start with Councilman Alvin.
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
The square footage of the homes is, what, 300 or something?
That's the next agenda item. That ain't this agenda item.
Okay. This is for the...
This is for zoning, special exception.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Councilman in College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, so this is strictly for the zoning. This is not the size of, that one of them was larger than the other, if I'm not correct.
That's correct. That's the next item.
Okay. All right. No further comment.
Councilman George?
I'll second what Lee said. You really touched a lot of points that I was going to make myself with this development. You know, I have family that's went through these kind of transitional homes, that lived in halfway houses, et cetera. I think that your comment is interesting enough that no one will have a criminal record, where I don't know of anyone in these situations that qualify for this type of living or go through this program that do not have a criminal record. Another important aspect of this development here is to look at, there is no mode for transportation, there's no ease of access to any kind of grocery stores, or college, or jobs, or anything like that. These people would have to have their transportation. And a lot of times with a halfway house, it's put in a downtown area where that is very accessible and makes their opportunities to grow and become independent greater. And with that, I just see that while it's a great opportunity, it's a great plan that you have, I just don't think that it's right for the area that it's in. And frankly, I think it may work for six months or so and fail, and we would be stuck with these empty boxes that do not fit with the area around it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman George. No, ma'am. It's his comments. He's making his comments. Is that all, Councilman George?
That's all.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody for coming and everybody's interest, and we're all about economic development here in Gochee. As we know, Mayor Bond, I donate a lot of time to nonprofits. I'm involved with CASA, I'm involved with SUSE Home, I'm involved with our transitional housing in other communities. My family helps run transitional facilities in Jackson County here. Collaboration is a big part, and you have to be strategically mindful of where you place certain developments. And I just feel we got to, if we're going to have transitional housing in Gochee, we need to make sure, we maybe create a task force if we need to in the future to add it to our unified development ordinance. But I do not feel rural areas not with great access to things, because we do have nonprofits that we partner with now that have people that would be a part of this nonprofit and possibly would benefit also, but they have to be located close to, at the age range we're looking at, to the college or high school if they're still in there. It has to be close to workforce. Riding, it's unsafe for us, people to communicate that way, and relying on other people for transportation in today's world is just not a good thing to rely on. So you just have to have great partnerships, as I say, a lot of collaborating, moving parts before you try to put this in an area that's not zoned for it currently. We have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman in College. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business item number six, consider a request for a 1,005 square-foot variance for 10 dwellings in an agriculture zoning district located on Carter Road, Gochee, Mississippi, GPC number 25-03-VAR, by Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The planning department has received this request from Randy Bosar for a 1,005 square-foot variance for 10 dwellings in an agricultural zoning district. Application fee is $175, paid on December 18, 2024, and all public notice required to admit. This request was really the second part to the request that y'all just made a decision on. It was for, as part of tiny transitional development, they wanted to put 10 structures on the property to use as dwellings. As planning commission heard this, they did actually recommend city council deny the variance as presented. The city council may approve the variance, approve the variance if changed, and deny the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Any public comments on business agenda item number six? Come to the podium. You got three minutes. State your first and last name and address.
Ashley Hawthorne, 6405 Mark Road in Theodore, Alabama. I do want to clarify a few things. I think that if you look at the square footage of all of these homes put together, I mean, we're talking 10 homes. This is not like some huge program. 10 homes of 300 square feet, I bet a lot of people in this room have homes that are larger than that. And we're talking about on three acres here, so, or, the whole property is three acres, but for this one acre of property, approximately 3,000 square feet total, if you think about it like that, is what is a common...
it like that, is what is a common home size for some. So I don't think that the zoning is that far off, or the future designated zoning is that far off from what we're actually proposing to put on the property. I do want to also clarify that the not all foster children have criminal records, and we're talking again about a small program, a small community of selected individuals. You mentioned things about the transportation and the security. If, all of our volunteers, all of our board members have experience with these types of programs in managing large amounts of money, in applying for grants, so we all have a long history. One of our board members has managed over $300 million in grants. Like, we have a team of well-qualified people, and this is not just something that we have just drawn up and, you know, thrown out here. So it is very well thought out. And again, the square footage is vital to this program. We are not using taxpayer dollars. In fact, homeless youth cost the city about $50,000 per individual. So if anything, we're not asking for anything from the city, and we would be providing a benefit. So consider, please consider approving this variance. We actually have also provided in the packet the discussion about decreasing the property value, which has been shown that these can actually increase the property value. And again, these are well-designed, aesthetically pleasing, and our goal is to actually keep with the agricultural feel of the area. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
Can you clarify?
Is there a timer?
Is there a timer?
Is there a timer?
It was 2:40.
Okay. I'm a little confused on the, because you keep saying foster children and youth. How, without transportation, or without access to things like college and jobs because they're in a rural area, how is a youth or a young foster child supposed to live on their own in a situation like this?
So I do want to clarify a little bit of the age. So the age would be roughly 16 to 19 years old. They either have to be adult that has legally aged out, which means 18 years old, or they would have to have some legal determination, like emancipation, that, you know, they are legally an adult to participate in the program. So it's not a bunch of children, but our plan is to eventually get them to be independent. So our plan is to have a large community van where we can take them to do all of these things. They may not have driver's license, they may, you know, not even have birth certificates and things, so our program will actually work with them to get the documents and everything they need in order to be successfully independent.
So if it's not just foster children, who are the other people?
It is foster children.
Only foster children?
Only children who are aging out of the foster system.
Because I just don't understand how you're going to be able to insure this property with minors living there solely to protect themselves.
We will actually, that's what the 11th home on the property is for, is for like our groundskeeper, we plan on having security and someone who is living there full-time with them.
Would you plan to have all of the power run to one account, the power company?
I assume so, yeah.
Okay. Well, now with the property values, meanwhile, I mean, we're looking at 3,000 square feet on however many acres you have. We can think about it like that, but that's not how it is. It is 10 individual homes that do not qualify for the square footage.
Correct.
If this plan falls through, we are left with 10 individual homes sitting on a property that no one's going to purchase. So whenever it's sitting there deteriorating, or it's not able to be sold for comparable square footage value for the other homes around them, it does decrease value.
We, we understand.
There's no way that it can increase. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, we can, because we don't have...
Those are just my questions, and I just wanted to...
Okay, because it's not a motion, so we need to...
Yeah.
Your three minutes is up, we'll move on, and then if we have a motion and a second and any questions, we'll ask. Any other public comments on business agenda item number six?
My name is Amber Gore. I live at 4707 Queen Elizabeth Drive in Ocean Springs, Mississippi. And I just wanted to touch on some things, comments that have been made, and you're welcome to ask questions or whatever, but, so, let me get this straight. So you said if we did, it would equal...
Okay, this is not a question in any session.
Okay, all right.
State your stuff, and then if somebody wants to, but we're moving on.
All right. So as Ashley stated, together, the homes would equal 3,000 square feet, okay? So my thought process is, okay, so if we put them all together and budded them up, it made one huge home, then y'all would still be okay with that? So that's my thought process in that. One other thing about this is, like Ashley stated, the transportation, I mean, it's five minutes from the interstate. It's not like it's in the middle of nowhere. I mean, it, it looks like it, but it's technically not, because it's five minutes from the interstate. But like Ashley stated, there would be volunteers that would drive these kids if they did not have driver's licenses. We also would be getting cars donated for these kids that would be able to drive back and forth. Another thing is, to be honest, that what it sounds like to me, and this is extremely discriminatory towards these kids. They are not, like, to state that they all have criminal records is not going to me. These are kids literally that just didn't get adopted. Like, they're just kids that are, were in the, in the foster care, and their luck, it was not good luck, and they just didn't get adopted, so they automatically get categorized into this category of, oh, they must be criminals and they must be bad kids. I am so blessed that I grew up with parents like I did, and I had an amazing home, and I'm sure some of you did too. And I thank God every day for that, because I look at kids like this and say to myself, like, I can't imagine that. So, and for them to be put into a category, to me, is the same thing as, to be honest, being racist. I mean, it's, it's very discriminatory and it's disturbing to me. And you, considering it's agriculture, like, we're, they, they plan on using this as these kids to, to use the land, to build gardens, and to eat off out of the gardens, like, it, they plan on using it in, in to align with how it's owned, in a sense. I think it's going to add value considering where it's at and what it's by. These homes are going to be extremely modern, and, I mean, tiny homes are up and coming, so, I mean, it's not like something, and to me, your comments are jumping ahead for the worst. I know y'all don't know my family very well, but we...
Your time's up. Thank you, have a great day.
I would just like to clarify one thing. My comment about criminal records has nothing to do with youth or foster children. I do remember there specifically being a discussion about ex-drug addicts and people coming out of jail, and rehab centers, and single mothers that have went through troubling times like that, and for the statistics to show, those people do have criminal records. So that's where my comment comes from. And that's all I have.
No, ma'am. Do not speak out of turn again, or I'll be asked you to leave our meeting. Thank you. Come on.
My name is Ellen Malone, 1313, you can live right in Goche, Mississippi. I'm an LCW, and everyone with that'll listen for a long time. And now that I understand you're talking about foster children, I cannot see a bunch of people, foster children, who are 18, 19 years old, coming out, living on their own, unless there's somebody who's there helping them to become young adults. I can't see them with cars, I can't see them there unless you have a lot, a lot, a lot of support for them. Because many of them were in foster homes enough because they want to be there. And a lot of them have not gotten some of the, what they, the guidance that they have needed to have gotten. And I just, I don't know, I like the idea, but, you know, you got to have a lot of things in place for it to work.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. We thank you.
Hi, Steve, my name is Jack Monkruston, I live at 101, Abuset Lane, Ocean Springs, Mississippi, 39564. I just want to say that everyone says that they understand about troubled youth and foster kids. But I don't think until you've been in that situation, or you've gone and looked in a home with foster kids, that you truly understand the situation. And respectfully, I really don't think you do, after your comments.
Ma'am, you're not going to make any derogatory comments towards any board member?
It was my opinion.
Or you will be asked to leave?
It was my opinion.
You are not going to talk like that to a board meeting in this meeting?
As a foster child, this is unacceptable, in my opinion, to me. I'm sorry, that's my opinion, I feel that...
And welcome from Ocean Springs. Okay.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, because you said you're from Ocean Springs.
No, I'm not from Ocean Springs, I'm from Atlanta.
Well, you said Ocean Springs.
I live in Ocean Springs.
Okay, well, go ahead.
This is the whole point, I don't know if you can hear me.
Next. Any other public comments? Just state your first and last name and address.
9 Bosarge, address 608 Forest Avenue, Longview. I think we're missing the big picture here. This program is patterned after a pilot program in Oklahoma and Pensacola. It has been studied, there is nothing like it in Mississippi. This would be a great opportunity for this city, a lot of good publicity. And it's been, my daughter spent thousands of dollars, hundreds and hundreds of hours of research. This would be fenced, I don't know if they mentioned before, it's a two-year program. If they step out of line, they would be, so there would be behavioral requirements for these children, and this would be a great thing for Goche, and it would really help the, well, to put the city on the map even more than it already is, because like I say, there's none other program in the city like this. So I respectfully ask y'all to maybe table it, maybe think about it a little more, because this is, this can be a great thing for this city, absolutely great. And it would be run professionally, and I, I don't see any downside to it. Sure, there's risk, there's a risk in everything we do to a certain extent, but I think she has building permit for the main, for the main residence, there would be another one for the caretaker. These people, like they say, will be driven to job interviews, and that, it's just, it's just a great opportunity for this city, and I just don't see any downside to it. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other public comments on business numbers, item number six? If you've got your, a comment, come to the front, state your first and last name and
Hello, my name is Brandy Bosarge, and my current address is 5850 Carter Road. This is my property. I included a 40-page proposal for real. I don't know that if any of y'all have read it, but if you did, then you would know that I have the screening criteria in there. This is very, very well thought out. I have partnered with colleges, I have recommendation letters from CASA, Mikey Sales Office. I have put tons and tons of hours and work and thought into this. Y'all talk about how, you know, all these, and let me correct, these are going to be young adults, these are not kids. Okay? If you also read the criteria, you will see everything listed. They will have to be recommended, recommended by like CASA, or maybe like Mississippi State or other workers, then they, then they will go through my board members. This is not just randomly picked. I'm setting a bar for these young adults, so they do have a chance. Because we have the bar so low. I have four different programs running out of there to ensure that this is a 100% guarantee. I have, you know, guidelines also for then if something were to happen, if they get, if they mess up, okay? These homes foster, what I say my program is, is empowering independence, because that's what they need, right? They need someone to teach them the things that we've all been taught, because someone's believed in us, right? Someone, you can remember someone in your life, imagine having them, imagine having nobody. And then here I come, and I designed this program for their success, and then I have y'all who, who don't see the benefit for not only the city, but individuals, and this is going to be a ripple effect. Because if they don't come to my program and learn these things, where do they go? Guess what? They end up on the streets committing crime, addicted to drugs. Those, it has been proven in studies that these programs are designed to help them to reduce those statistics. And so we're not putting labels on them. I just ask that y'all really, really consider...
Brandy, your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I think before we can this program...
State your address, Mr. Malone.
1313 Hickory Hill Drive. I think before we can this program, we need to take a look at the entire program, sit with these people, look at everything they're going to provide, who's going to be to monitor these children, young men, men, women. Don't just poo-poo them because they've already probably gone through a lot. All of us at some point in life have lived somewhat, they've led us up to half a step to the next step. And I think this is a good program to start with, as long as it offers super relief and management. Let's not just throw them to the curb, because these young people are going to go somewhere. Goche has a chance to put their creamers in hands on these kids and make them better citizens, correct a lot of this stuff. So don't be so quick to just say, oh, no, we don't want to run out. Give them a chance. Let's see how we can work with these young people and board here, and make the program work. If it don't work, then we can always say, hey, you're out of here.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Any other public comments?
Danny Coben, 1412, Good Beach. I think we ought to have compassion, like the word said, we ought to go by what the word is. And we ought to have compassion for these kids. We ought to reach out and don't put property value over kids' value. We ought to do what Doug said to the Lord, neighbor helping the neighbor. And we ought to just reach out to the kids and give them a change. As the young ladies say, that they're going to do what they say they're going to do, and we ought to monitor them. So I'm asking you all to give them a change, and then reach out and have compassion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Just to remind everybody, this business item is not about the allowing transition housing in that area. in that area. That business item has already passed. This is about square footage. This agenda item we're voting on is about allowing 300 square foot versus our other square footage. So this is not about allowing the transitioning housing. We already voted on that topic.
The result of 1436, we become Gochay. I, I'm too, just listening to the comments and how they're real passionate about what they're going through, I think we need to go out, take a look at it, see what we can do to help them. Everybody needs help. So we need to take into consideration that they, they try to help some kids. And that's what it's all about. If we don't have a future, if we don't give something to the kids, we don't have a future. So we need to take into consideration. Let's go out and see what it's all about. Let's see what they plan on and try to help. That's my, that's my...
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Any other public comments on business agenda item number six? We have a, do we have a motion on business agenda item number six?
I make a motion that we deny the request for a 1,005-foot variance for 10 dwellings in an AG Agricultural Zoning District located at Carter Road, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC 25-03-VAR.
Got a motion by Councilman George. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussions? Start with Councilman Elbin.
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson.
Yeah, I, I think it's a beautiful design, and after listening to some of the letter comments there, something is definitely needed like this, I would think. I don't know a lot about foster care, I've never been involved in it, but I'm sure there's a great need for it. And this looks like a beautiful design. I'm not sure the area that we're talking about here is the right area for it. Maybe it needs to be in a more downtown area. But I wouldn't blame you if you take and move this design to Ocean Springs after the rudeness of this mayor and the way he just treated some of you people. That's pretty sad. I wouldn't blame you if you moved it to Ocean Springs, just the other side of Highway 57, and found a piece of property over there for it. Because you're going to get treated like this for now only. That's all I got.
Councilman College.
Yes, I appreciate the, the thought put into this effort, and I understand that there's a pilot program in Oklahoma and Pensacola, and I understand the premise of it. The location being in a rural area, and you're talking about, you know, having a community van, but if you've got 10 individuals, I know they say if you put these 10, 300 square foot conics, you've got 3,000 square foot, but how many 3,000 square foot homes do you have that have 10 people living in it also? So the program itself, I think, has a really strong basis. Perhaps, you know, coming, did you invite any of us to come see this program in Pensacola? To see how it works out? Was it in a, is it in a rural area, or is it in a very more urban area where you can move back and forth? These are questions. I'm not looking for responses, I'm just, that's the same in Oklahoma. Is this in a rural area? Are there, are there sidewalks? Is there public transportation? These are the two areas that have these pilot programs that, if they're successful, and I don't know how long they've been in process for. But those are the kind of items that, before coming in front of planning commission and council with paperwork and sit down, hey, come visit what we've got here. It's worked. It's been in process for 10 years. We have a 95% success rate or something like that. But the area we're looking at here in Gochay, and unfortunately, we don't have public transportation, our sidewalks are limited to a public, to our main infrastructure, our main thoroughfares, and this location is just, you're not going to walk to work. You're not going to walk to school. Public transportation is available, so unless each individual is, has the same exact timeframe going on, if they've got, be a class or work at the same time, then how does that all function? These are things to keep in mind. How can we make this a, a successful venture to help these youths or young adults, more young adults? And that's, that's what I think us on the council are looking for, rather than coming in front and saying, this is what we want to do, 10 homes, it's going to look like this. But we need to have, you know, some, not necessarily proof, but some history that this program has worked in other areas that are, that are in a similar situation than Gochay's. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
I cannot comment at this time, and the reason I'm not going to comment any further, because I had communicated via email with Ms. Bosarge in the past. I did tell her that I thought this was a good idea, but due to the fact that she had contacted a law firm concerning this, and going through that, so I was advised not to communicate anymore with anybody, so therefore I have no further comments.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, so I ain't want to just flirt out anything. I wanted to make sure I saved my comment during Councilman comment. Of course, I already said that I agree with this program. I have no problem with the program. And when we initiated the first time we came here about this program, it was about the 320-foot square foot homes. That's what this was about. And I sold it to the council board. They said, combine the houses, combine the pods, make the square foot. And we get back, and we got this again, where it did not make the square foot. And so it wouldn't matter to me if it didn't make the square foot, in my personal opinion, but I knew that it wasn't going to sell to the city. I already knew that. That's why I sold the concept of the square foot to combine, and we still got the same thing. Came back with the exact same thing, 320 square foot houses. They're not going, no, none of, I can hear the complaints, soon as we approve of something like this, everybody going to start complaining. Why they letting 320-foot square foot houses be built in the city of Gochay? I know they're going to start doing it. So, and then, and then there's going to be other people saying, hey, we want to build a, a bunch of them throughout the city. This is the room, this the way, the way it's going to go when we approve, buddy. So I sold it to this council board, and if we just took that first step, you would be in your next step. I don't, it don't bother me at all, the program, I like, I, I have no negative comment, no comment at all, nothing against the program itself. I was a troubled teen, so I know I don't have no problem with the program. So the, if we could get past the, I, I guess you sold on the idea of the 320-foot square house, if you could combine them, you could have got to the next step, and we could just move on past, and all this would be over with. But if you sold on an idea that the 320-foot square foot houses is what you want, the way you want it, it's going to be hard to push. So that, that's my comment. So I, so I already stated, so I, so when you go out and you have your, you have a, say, hey, this council board don't think abroad from their ideas, yes, we do. I do. I know I do. So this the only thing that was the hangup that I know of, whatever business you, even if you wanted to rent them out. I said clearly in that council meeting that day, I don't care if you're making your money, make your money. I made that clear. If you want to be a business owner, and you want to open up something that, that had make affordable homes for people that, that can't afford, because that was the first initiation thing we, we started with. If you want to make that, I'm for it. I support it. But I knew we were not going to get a 320 square foot home. I knew that wasn't going to get approved by the any board. They, they, you know, the UDO requires us to have like 13, five, and they're going to stick with that. You know, I'm, I know that, just because I'm up here doing business on this council board. So I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm not going to vote you out, in my opinion. I'm, I'm probably going to abstain my vote. I just want you to consider that. Start thinking about that, because you're going to keep falling in the stumbling blocks over and over and over again if you don't meet this criteria. I already know that's going to happen. That's just the political business that's probably every city around. So I mean, I just want you to keep that in mind. You're not being, at least on my end, you're not being blocked at all, and you never was blocked at all. I told you from the beginning, I agree with your idea. Well, let's get past this stumbling block, so we can just move forward. There won't be all the bickering, going back and forth. We can be mature, everybody can get along, and things can, we can make progress. So that's my spiel on it, and I have no more further comment. If you need to talk to me afterwards, I'm open ears.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
Oh, good job, Richard. I think you did a great job explaining that, that I felt like the board has tried to explain for a while. I want to clarify my comment about criminal records, because that has waited on me since I've said it. And the reason I said it is because I was under the impression that these were teens coming from the youth court that had a record, that were transitioning back to get a job and get on their feet after going through troubled youth from the youth programs at the court. Now that I know that these are foster children that have aged out and need some guidance, okay, but I wanted to apologize and retract that statement, because I think it came out wrong, and it was interpreted wrong, so that is my stance on that. There's a lot of tension with this, and I think that that shows your passion, and I commend you for that. I think this is a great program idea. But at the end of the day, with the program, in the area that it's in, AG Residential Agricultural District, we have to, and we are elected to, protect the integrity of that area for the people that live there. And the people that live in that area have spoken out against it. They don't want it.
There was a new paper, a newspaper.
Not tonight, what I heard. I heard three people speak against it that live in that area, tonight, in this room. So that is what we have to do up here, is protect the integrity of where they live, because they live there now. You know, we can't just change the dynamic of their neighborhood to support your dream, even though we may support your dream, but the residents, that's who we're here for. As far as the square footage thing, 100%, Richard is right. And you said it yourself, it's 3,000 together with all the, but the units together, you don't even have to be here applying for this variance. And we've said that since day one, back when this was an Airbnb rental idea.
Never been that.
It was day one, was it not?
No, never. I think you guys...
Councilman College, just, I mean, Councilman George, just tell your comments, and then we move on.
Okay. Well, the first meeting, I remember there being discussion of Airbnb short-term rental, but, and then this came about. But anyways, those are my comments on that, so I just wanted to clarify that, that it is where it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman College. Thank you. Councilman Jackson is correct, and I echo everything he stated. And once again, I remind everybody that we see the need, we support the need. It has to be a task force committee, or something designed that allows the area in Gochay that it goes. I personally, and I thank Councilman George's wife, served on CASA, I'm very close with CASA. I speak with CASA. Once again, I'm familiar with our pastors, ministers, that go to the meetings related to transitional housing with youth aging out. I communicate with the other trans, transitional housing that we have here in Jackson County. I read my packet of information, and I support the idea and know we need it. But is this location the area? I do not feel it is. I feel like we need a task force, and we need it to be in a different area, and we support the idea, and we support the youth coming out. And no people that are coming out of foster care are not criminals, and no, it's not racism that was brought up in comments, and nobody has accused, per se, anybody of being criminals or racism. So for that to be stated at this podium is disheartening. When you, this is not about that. This is about zoning issues in a zone where it's not allowed, and then a square footage issue. Those are the two issues that have been voted on this evening. So once again, we're open to partnering with people about transitional housing, and facilities, and locations in the city of Gochay, and future developments, and we welcome all developments here in the city of Gochay. We have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman College. All in favor? All opposed? Councilman Anderson and Councilman Jackson abstained, and motion carried. That brings us to business agenda item number seven. Approval of the docket of claims, they've been provided by the city clerk, and they've been online. Any public comments on business agenda item number seven? None? Do we have a motion by council?
I make a motion, we approve the docket of claim, provide that all entries are there on, are true, correct, properly entered, not proposed.
We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussions? Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman, Councilman Gilat?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
No discussion.
Motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They're approved in one motion, unless one is pulled. Consent item one is approval of the minutes from regular council meeting held February 4th, 2025. Consent number two, receive January 2025 privilege license report. Three, authorization for the city of Gochay to become a member of the Gochay Rotary Club. Consent four, approval of change order number two to increase the contract amount and pay application. Number four, for work completed for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation phase two, College Park, Gilottville Road and Valleywood subdivision. Consent number five, approval of the final pay application summary, change...
I'd like to pull this one through, for the discussion, for the five.
Anybody want to pull one?
And number six.
I asked them.
Well, you start reading. Three, five, and six.
Councilman Elbin? Councilman Anderson, any more you want to pull?
No.
Councilman College?
When you got, because you're talking so fast, I didn't have time to interrupt you.
Councilman College?
I just want five and six, that was it.
Councilman Gilat? Do you want to pull any?
No.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
I have, no, I'm good.
So do we have a motion to, we're going to, consent number one, approval of the minutes for regular council meeting held February 4th, 2025. Two, receive January 2025 privilege license report. Four, approve change order number two to increase the contract amount and pay application. Number four, for work completed for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation phase two, College Park, Gilottville Road, Valleywood subdivision. Seven, approval of water and sewer adjustments for February 2025 in the amount of $13,852.65. Eight, approval of the contract agreement between the city of Gochay and Jackson County Election Commission for the municipal primary. Nine, approval of a business change of service addendum agreement with spark light for Wi-Fi and Internet services at the Sound Amphitheater. Ten, receive December 2024 finance reports. Eleven, approval for the use of the Sound logo for the GMYC t-shirt fundraising event. Thirteen, approval of a request for Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College to use four portable lights. Fourteen, resolution for city council to approve hiring Seymour Engineering to survey potential conflicts as identified by MDOT of City Utilities with the Mississippi Department of Transportation, Highway 90 widening project. Do we have a motion to approve consent one through two, four, seven through 14?
Seven through 11, 13, and 14.
All right, seven through 11.
And then 13 through 14.
And 13 through 14. So moved. Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number three, authorization for the city of Gochay to become a member of the Gochay Rotary Club. Miss Shinksey, you want me, you want to take it, or you want me to explain it?
Yeah, I have a question. I just have some questions. How many are, we are proving dues to be paid for, how many?
Well, except corporate membership.
It is a city membership. You cannot legally pay for someone else's. Like if I wanted to be a member of Rotary, and it's all against you, you can't pay for an individual's, individual membership. But you can't. The city as a whole can be a member of Rotary, and that's what it is.
Think of it like a corporate membership.
It's sort of like the Jackson... It's sort of like the Jackson County Chamber that we do. It's sort of like the Jackson County Economic Development Foundation.
You know, like, like banks, they have corporate sponsorships, where they have like three members of the bank. But what if 35 people from the city go to a meeting, and they only have a lunch available for?
Their corporate membership, their corporate membership of Rotary is only three, it's three. So if one can't go, or somebody can't go, it's other people going. So used to, it used to be, years ago, the city used to be a member of Rotary when Cindy Reynolds was here. City manager would go, the mayor would go, directors or whoever could go on their spot. They used to have a corporate membership.
Okay, well, that was my question, we, we can't have 20/3 of the people.
No, that's not what.
So, but there'll be three, three people that can go.
That's right.
Whether it be the council, or city employees, or, okay.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I got.
You want to make a motion?
Anybody else?
I said, do you want to make a question?
Yeah. I make a motion to authorize city of Gochay to become a member of the Gochay Rotary Club as a corporate sponsor.
Motion by Councilman Anderson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent item number five, approval of the final pay application, final change order, and other closeout documents for the NRCS 2021 San Lorenzo and Cypress Landing at Ferry Point project by Ms. Kim Sash.
I just had a couple of questions, right? Has substantial completion been issued on this, or a punchless walkthrough? Yes, this is the summary change, well, this is the summary final change order, another closeout document for the NRCS. Are there outstanding items that need to be addressed currently? Are there outstanding items that need to be addressed currently of either the San Lorenzo or the Cypress Landing?
I don't know, punch list. I know the project is scheduled to be completed inside the building, and we had some extra, we did some extra, we just put a few crossings in. So as far as I know, there's been a punch list, I would, I would check. I know we have this.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to verify. All right, based on that, I make a motion that we approve final application, summary final change order, and other closeout documents for the NRCS 2021 San Lorenzo and Cypress Landing at Ferry Point project.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Galot, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number six, authorization to acknowledge bids and award contract for Hickory Hills, LaGrange, and Cerrito Water Quality and Stormwater runoff improvements project to Miller Enterprises LLC by Kim Sash.
I'll just continue my route there, and I know Matt's here. Well, I know, going through the bid tabulations and so forth, I just want to make sure we're fully better that Miller Enterprises is good to go ahead with this project, because their bid was substantially lower than their next level one. So I just want to make sure that everything's on the up and up and verified.
So I went through them with Mr. Miller, this guy, far out here, and he's good. I went line by line, he's good there.
He's good with everything. And I just want to add the comment that this has been a project since a long time coming. I know Councilman Elbin, myself, and the mayor have all worked pretty diligently to get this moving off the ground. And thanks to our city manager for procuring the funds, and our city engineer, this is something that's been desperately needed, and it's going to be a great benefit for that community. Based on that, I make a motion that we authorize to acknowledge bids for the Hickory Hill, LaGrange, Cerrito Water Quality, and Stormwater runoff improvement projects and award the contract to Miller Enterprises LLC.
We got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elbin?
Did you say?
Yes.
Councilman Elbin, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number 12, authorization to waive rental fees at Baycott Park Pavilion for Prepared.
Just prepare her now.
Prepare Her Now, that's what I thought it was, but it was ran together, so I didn't know. Prepare Her Now Organization to host a community outreach initiative by Ms. Chastity Bilber.
You want me to come up there, or is there a?
We're gonna let Chastity, it's her agenda item. That's okay. That's okay. Question, who, Councilman Elbin, you wanted a question about it?
Yes, I kind of wanted to understand what this program is about. I've talked to Ms. Cass, or Casey, a couple of times, but I wasn't sure what the program had to entail.
You want to hold it? Yes.
Come on up. You were right first.
Just take your first and last name for the record.
All right, it's Casey Parker. Hi, gentlemen. So I founded a nonprofit called Prepare Her Now, it's for girls ages eight through 18. The mission is to empower girls with the courage to speak up for their future, understand the power, and we're equipped them with the essentials to care for their minds and spirits. So essentially, what that is, is we're helping to prepare, support, educate girls as they transition into womanhood. Through our workshops, programs, events, we're focusing on financial literacy, health and wellness, mental health, and all of the above, right? As a woman, as now a woman who was once a girl, a young girl, there were things that I, even with having two parents in the household, that I needed. And even just changes with understanding with my body and my mental, you know. I know that y'all really want to, you're men. We go through a lot of things, a lot of changes.
Absolutely.
We had to put up with it, too.
I live with a house of girls.
So our lunch event, we're having it on May 3rd, and we're hoping to have it at Baycott Park. And this is, we're wanting to give the fees away, because we are a non-profit, and so we're working on funding, hope people love the support of Gochay. So that is just my little tidbit, but yes, I hope y'all can approve it. The agenda, but yeah. So, and I hope you all can come out to the event, we would love to have you.
Thank you, Casey, we thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Like I said, we discussed this in, you know, in passing, but I want to know what your program is about. And that says a lot about what you're trying to develop with these children. With that being said, I make a motion that we accept the authorization to waive rental fees at Baycott Park Pavilion for Prepare Her Now Organization to host a community outreach initiative.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Elbin, a second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion? I just want to thank you for coming, and thank you for your involvement and caring about our youth. This partnership is great, along with the other nonprofit in that area that benefit women. We're blessed to have the partnerships to continue to help outreach our youth and make them show that we care about them, and we're here to support them if we need them. So we appreciate your nonprofit partnership. We have a motion by Councilman Elbin, a second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our citizen comments. You have three minutes, come to the front, take your first and last name. Mr. Leibon, I think left his agenda item is what he was speaking on. Casey Parker, you want to speak again, or just what you just did was?
Oh, no, that, that was it.
Okay, okay, we're gonna mark you up. Charles Moore.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Moore.
I'm still on Rusty, I know he retired.
Name and address.
Name and address first.
Charlotte Moore, 1820 West Gate Parkway, Gochay, Mississippi. I'm still on you, Rusty, I know you retired, but I want to let you be tied.
It's pretty, it's pretty sure of him, Mr. Moore.
All right, thank you. I'm still on this project, I'm, the city needs to be, our, we need to be putting college, campus squares up, we need, not college, sorry, campus squares up, we need, we need something that for the kids to do. There's nothing out there. And another name, favorite, thank you, we honor your mother.
Okay, appreciate it.
She ate at what, 80?
91.
91.
She was 92.
She went way back, all the way back to, you know, 1925, I mean, 2025.
Your mom?
So we honor you, yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. That brings us to Travanta Thomas.
Good. I'm Travanta Thomas, I live at 1923 Private Drive, Gochay, Mississippi. We've met a couple times, and this is actually, I'm just here to, really clarify about my own food truck. It's registered in the city, but I was told, how about this board, but beforehand that food trucks aren't allowed. And the city of Gochay almost, give you this clarification on what I would need to do to make it to where I'm able to set my food truck up at various places in the city that had gave me permission to, but the city is pushing, I guess, against food trucks as a whole, taking away the ready, brick and mortar businesses, I would guess, or what I'm told. My business wouldn't like, would be any different than a McDonald's, or Dollar General here, because I'm registered here in the city. So I would just like to get some clarification on how I would go about being able to set up on a day-to-day basis here in Gochay.
Well, our ordinance does not allow, you're correct, they did tell you correctly, does not currently offer food trucks, except for our Tasty Thursday event that is held through our Parks and Rec Department. Unless a business has a special event permit, and they apply through the city, and then they get special event permitting, then they can have a food truck at their special event. We did, at our prior meeting, we had a citizen request about food trucks, too, and we asked to have a meeting with them, and for them to contact the city manager's office to set up a meeting. And we're willing to maybe have a task force committee of some local, like we told them at the last meeting. I feel like, you know, we are a growing young city, but you have to get your, we need to get our restaurant brick and mortars buy-in and work on a medium, whatever our plan is. We need to get their input, because we did tell some of our brick and mortar, who wanted to have the same type of setup as what you're trying to do, they were not allowed to do that. So they went and added on to their business, and now they have a larger brick and mortar. So we need to incorporate, and they do, some of our restaurants have been, they have expressed that they really like and support the Tasty Thursday, one or two time a month type ordeal, and not just setting up anywhere and affecting their brick and mortar because of their increase of their property taxes, their insurance, product, their liability for their workman's comp, all those increases, utilities that are hired of a food truck. So those are just the concerns of our current brick and mortar businesses. And some of those that aren't in favor of that are no longer the business owners, so we might could partner. But I think we just need to create like a committee, like we've discussed before, and try to look at a food truck ordinance.
I'm not here to have people ask food trucks, and that's food trucks that are here to go, I pay. So I'm not really here to ask them for every food truck to be able to come in outside of the city, but I mine is actually here, and actually registered to my home.
But you can't, once again, you can't say one food truck can and one can't legally. So we have to, what's, whatever one's allowed to do, they're all gonna be allowed to do, unfortunately.
Even out in the city?
That's how, would depend on our ordinance we create. But currently, that, you can't say, well, you can only allow one and not, like a prime example, we have a business within our city who wanted a, it's not a restaurant, but they own a food truck in an area outside of the city. They want to put their food truck on their property they currently own.
But I had a property that I was renting out as well.
Right.
I had to push it, basically, my, my lease there wasn't allowed to set up my food truck here. I understand exactly what you're saying, as far as all food trucks, but I think the ones who are actually registered in the city should be the first coming, first serving, because it's here, they negotiate, not.
Yep.
Okay, I'm talking about, that's a rule, I own a food truck, I want to come and set up.
Basically, a license.
Right, and I think.
Side of Gochay. Is your property commercial? Your property, do you have, is it commercial?
The one I was renting out was commercial. My business, when I initially registered it, it was registered to my house, I didn't have to pay.
But you're, yeah, you rented a piece of commercial property.
Well, I rented a piece of commercial property, but I did buy out the lease, because I wasn't allowed to. I was gonna run it through there, for me, just use that as my commercial kitchen, running inside, trying to pick up the food from the inside of the commercial building, but I was still told I couldn't do that, so I had to buy out the lease.
Nah, nah, you saying you have, you rented out a commercial building, too?
No, just a lot.
Oh, just a lot.
No, 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 I had a.
No, a building? Were you prepared to be in, right?
I wasn't gonna, I was still gonna prepare the food out of the truck and run it through.
The building.
The building.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think that.
But I wasn't able to actually see.
If you reach out to our city manager's office, and she will schedule a meeting with you, and, because you, I think you, depending on the location, we have allowed it to be a food trailer and go through the building.
I don't actually have children, I'm not.
Right, so we have allowed that in certain areas. So reach out to Ms. Yancy's office, the city manager, and schedule a meeting, and then we'll try to ask her to look at getting some stuff together and looking at a committee task force for a food truck ordinance. Since we're, we've had a flux of inquiry from people wanting food truck type stuff here in the city that live here, and then also we've heard issues from the local brick and mortar businesses. So we would invite them to come to the meeting and try to work something out. Okay? You're welcome. But just get with Ms. Yancy, and get, after the meeting, and get her info. Okay. That brings us to Mr. Greg Canada.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
Greg Canada, 1453 Route 77. First day is, of course, I always see them, I can't have them see them at night all the time. And, and yes, they did lay another layer of asphalt. But it appeared they gonna need to put some more asphalt, because it's still below, I don't know who's on the project, still below the storm drain. So soon they gotta put some more asphalt on there. But also, I saw that they, they started to paint some lanes on there, I like what they're making now, you know. So I, I don't know, I'm just wondering, what, what, how's that going?
It's a temporary pass. I mean, once, once the project's complete, they'll do the final pullover, but in order for them to start on the southbound side of it, or actually going to, they want to divert traffic. But you don't want to wear asphalt surface course on that one, when it's all said and done, they'll do a final pullover.
Okay, okay, definitely, I know, so. And so I saw that utility, Douglas County was out, and he was marking the sewer lines on Alexis, Lewis Alexis. And I'm just wondering, what was that project, is they trying to divert water flow to new wastewater facility?
Well, it could just be, you know, depending, Ms. Morgan, it could be anything. They've been line locating for everything from ceasefire to AT&amp;T to Singing River Electric, to, it's been all kind of utilities doing line locates. Each one has got something else. Some's doing fiber, some's doing gas, some's do, Ms. Morgan, do you know off the top of your head which project, or what this one is?
I would assume it's some sort of fiber optic cable.
Of the fiber optic, I guess I do.
Usually AT&amp;T comes in first, and they lay all their lines, and they move out, and then the next fiber optic comes through. And then the next one comes after that, it seems to be a revolving process, but that's what we've seen so far.
They're chasing everybody around town.
Yes, okay, so I, it was just something, it was out there now. And another thing, I think I brought it up before, the water treatment facility, how is that coming on? I think it hadn't even been built, but the equipment been bought, or stored, or something like that?
Talking about the ones, so.
Michael?
No, I think, yeah, you come up with this kids.
Our, our manufacturers are complete, so the membranes and skids and tank, everything are manufactured and complete. In talking with the core, we, they have a different process than anybody else. So basically, we moved all the way to, it's been determined a warrantable project, they've gone out for bids. I think they negotiated with the contractor, and they're trying to process paperwork and award it. And I'm told it should be hopefully by the end of February.
Okay.
So I'm hoping I hear something in the next two weeks, it takes about three weeks to process whatever paperwork.
And that portion of the project is actually the force lab, and build the metal building, and then they'll install the skids inside of it. It was a two-part program right here. So the treatment equipment itself is, is not here, but it's built and ready to ship over, and it may end up getting shipped over here, well, up to storage somewhere, another while the Army Corps of Engineer actually pours a slab, builds. actually pours the slab, builds the building, and then installs the equipment and ties it all together.
And then builds it on the side.
Well, it's gonna be enclosed, it's gonna be inside of the building.
Yes.
The storage facility for the skids has already been built.
Oh, okay.
It's ready for the skids to come.
How do you put the skids in? Is it, is it a slide or on the roof over?
They'll haul them here. They're manufactured, and they'll haul them here on that truck.
They have to start to hook up sometimes, engineers.
But I mean, that's a storage facility, that's not the actual final placement of the building. We're waiting for our recorded engineers, actually building itself.
We have somewhere for them to deliver them to, to the contractor.
Can I bring up that?
I got it, I got it. And the last thing is, where is it located? What really?
Located at the current, where the current brick and plant is, over at the utility. And last I lived off, the contract that they were gonna award was a 500 and 80 day contract. That's from the beginning to the last, mid-on, yes.
So it did, it helped hold?
Yes.
And the holding, how many, is there any gallons?
You mean, a gallon a day? This one, we already have a one being down, I'll exchange plan. This one is being, supposedly being constructed, is a three being a gallon a day. Then we have an additional 2.7 billion through EPA, which is a different process, to build a one being a gallon a day at the Bartwell to address the rest of North City.
Oh, okay, so it's gonna be, how many?
Two.
Two.
And I'd be glad to send you, we put a Facebook post with the update on social media, and we put it on the website and the app, after you requested that request. So we'll, I'll send you the link so you can look at it.
I appreciate, I know you did it last time about a year ago.
Well, we just recently done it, less than a few months ago.
Okay, I like that.
After you came last time.
Yeah, my time.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kim. That brings us to council comments. We start with Councilman Elvin.
Just like to thank all the employees, public safety, support staff, our contract partners for all the work you do each day to make our city run efficiently as it does.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman College?
I have no comments.
Councilman Galut?
It's beginning to get cold in here, since half the people...
That was one, that was about to be my comment.
So just a reminder, folks, we're gonna have some cold weather again at the end of this week, so get ready.
Tomorrow.
This one starts the end of the week, tomorrow night.
Councilman?
Over halfway there?
Something, huh?
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, sir. No thanks to whoever turned the AC on. Probably Scott.
The one shot.
Casey told him to turn it on, I'm sure. But I have a blessed week, and we're, pray the next time we have a meeting that won't have so much difficulties in it. We need to stay professional, talk, or back and forth with each other. So I think that that would show the growth in this city, because we want to show nothing but the growth. We already growing, we want to continue to show the growth and the maturity of our, our own city. Because that's where we're leading to, we're leading to development, more development, greater things are coming to this city already. So we just need to be prepared, and so hopefully next time, we, and I'm sure it will be, because I know this was an experience for today, but I'm sure that next meeting, we moving forward, working, and getting things done. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson.
If I'm not mistaken, I think it was maybe somebody over here by Paula that turned the air down. Typically, that's, that's an old funeral home tactic, when the patients get close to done, they cut the air down so people leave. I think that's a suggestion to get out of here. But anyways... But, you know, back to what Richard said, you know, not all meetings are easy, and they're not all beautiful, and we have hard decisions that we have to make, that at the end of the day is gonna make someone upset or someone happy. And I just want to commend Casey for doing a good job up here. And when we come to these meetings, you're prepared, and you keep it regulated, and you keep it to the point. And I just want to say thank you, and for doing a good job, and being a good leadership for us. Because it's not easy, and while we want to please everyone, and give everyone what they want all day, every day, because people think that's how the world turns, we just can't do it. And our residents that are in this room are who we're here for, and, and sometimes, you know, that's gonna hurt feelings, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. And George, I'm sorry. Councilman George, Jackson and George, I think they've...
We look just alike.
Y'all do, y'all do.
That's a compliment.
What a great, you know, we've had a lot of great things going on. Our youth are preparing for graduation. But I would like to ask some people to stand up that volunteer free to help make Gochay operate. And they give recommendation to us, and their job is not easy, just like our job up here sometimes, it's not easy. But we thank them for their volunteerism. So if we could get Councilman George's appointee, Ms. Deanna McManus, if she would stand. Councilman Anderson's appointee, Casey Jamison, please stand. And Mayor Von's appointee, Josh Ward. They are our planning commissioners that are here this evening, but we also think the ones who are not here that might be watching online, we thank you all for your hard work and dedication. So I feel it's important that we recognize you and continue to thank you for your volunteerism to help continue to make Gochay grow.
Thank you.
I also want to... I would like to recognize Ms. Marquita Buxton here in the back. I know she don't deserve any, don't want any praise, but we recognized our football team last week at First United Methodist Church, who are great pillars in our community to offer their facilities. But the alumni association that Marquita Buxton sits on the board, volunteers, anytime you need something with our youth, she's always willing to help, go above and beyond. So we thank you for continuing to help those little darlings. And just continue to keep our school in your thoughts and prayers, our youth, our teachers. We're blessed to have them, and they are making history in Gochay. Not only did our football team make history, but the other organizations, band, choir, everything. So just support our youth and our community as they get ready to prepare for graduation and make some life-changing decisions. I also want to thank our nonprofits that we partner with, CASA, Sue's Home, our ministries that are involved with transitional housing, Home of Grace. It's great partnerships, and I'm glad they're available as leaders when we need them for their guidance, to help guide us in the right direction and help us make good decisions. And they care about community, and they care about all youth and adults transitioning out of whatever you're transitioning from or whatever environment. So we want to thank all of them. I thank all the staff, all the public safety. We've had a busy little week in public safety land, and so we thank all of you for your partnership and volunteerism, too, when you're off duty. Public Works echo what Councilman Elvin said about all of our service providers also. Don't forget, Mardi Gras is gonna be a great time. I want to thank Black Door Boutique and Air Masters. They were one of the ones that really spearheaded when I brainstormed with Mayor Dickerson, the owner of Black Door, and we kicked off the Mardi Gras tailgate. And we've continued, and now we're getting grants, and continue to grow the event and have fireworks. So I want to encourage you to participate, come support it. Also, we thank the Men's Club for hosting and organizing the parade. Please come, it's gonna be a great afternoon, Saturday in Gochay. And before you come, please support one of our citizens, Mr. Wayne Goldar. Organizes Gochay Community. They will have that at the Civic Center, Convention Center by the library. Just go down there and support the community market he will have. So once again, we thank all of you. That brings us to city manager comments. Do you have anything? Ms. Montgomery, you have anything, our city clerk? And Mr. Dennis, do you have anything from our attorney's temple? Do we have a motion to adjourn until March the fourth at 6:30 PM?
Salute.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Motion carries. We're adjourned.